I'm starting to not talk many in.
Good morning, how are you? Did you have a good Easter?
Uneventful, that's good for me.
Can't sorry.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to our pre-meeting on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please do not hand the all capable to the person.
This is the premier of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, April nineteenth. We have a few minutes from April the twelfth. Appeals we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on May the twenty-eighth from seven P M until eleven P M on Springfield Avenue. May the seventh from three P M until ten P M at Lafayette Stadium. April twenty-fourth from two P M until eight P M. Now, we're adding that one as at Dodge.
And, Mr. President. And the first one with Cory not here, then we go into eleven P M. Has anybody talked to him about that one?
Uh, he has not said anything. I would try to test it between meetings.
That one's so late, if we don't hear anything from him, we just want to hold that over a week until he's back.
I'll test him.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structure at thirty-two-ten First Avenue without public nuisance and order demolished. Communications to the council. Please pardon. Um, the rest of the route not be changed. Paul Strather.
Is this the same bus route that I asked about?
Yes.
And is she one of the disabled people?
Yes.
So, will she also be her likely grandfather be the other disabled people?
Uh, Damon did not say that. He said that route was going to be completed. Will be more. They're gonna dis-
But if she's on the same route with the blonde with, with, uh, this name, then could she also be completed?
I could call him today for you.
I ask a question. Uh, Councilor Carroll. I think I heard you say a couple of weeks ago that the previous council used to vote for the blonde.
Yeah, but I looked, yeah, but I looked up all the federal statutes and all this stuff. The wave transit system has the ability to cancel up to twenty percent of the trials without council approval. So, they can do some work within the law system to manage trials without us, without the benefit of loss of legally. So, but in Bearin Street City and to the constituents that live around the trials, I think that, you know, we should at least be notified, told in that they, you know, find a way to interact with the transit authority when things like this is gonna happen. We've been through, since I've been involved with the city, we've been through, uh, one, two, three, this will be the fourth route reduction since I've been involved with the councils, and I know y'all probably had a route reduction while I was in. And this is the first one I've been involved with where there has not been any administrative involvement or council.
Um, Paula. Paula Strather. Um, regarding, uh, Almond Coles and the Black Death, um, eighteen thirteen off the road. Charlie Martin, the districting. Sylvia Mart- Sylvia Reed, the districting. Uh, Reverend Edna Allen, um, the districting. Orin Davis. Regarding the prayer inn and the atrium of Governor Plaza and also the districting Katie Heron and, um, new districting maps. And Reverend Dees has canceled. Orders is held over. Sixty-one, zero, one, five ordinance to add Article eleven for chapter sixty-one traffic. The Mobile City Code that allows speed vehicles.
Mr. President. I ask that we hold this one over one week. Carroll.
Have we held this over a while since the committee?
Well, since I was here, I've got an amendment I'd like to offer, and we need, we need five to pass it. So, um, we can pass twenty-five today or shoot it down, whatever, just makes it a little more complicated.
I didn't know, but I thought only one of us that was in this city. What event?
He's just trying to do it as simple as possible.
This is Dave. I, I've been getting, excuse me, a number of communications with respect to this matter from the public. It appears that the public is under, or some members of the public are under a misunderstanding of where we sit now with respect to those vehicles on the city streets. There appears to be a widespread conviction that it's open season and anyone can use, that anyone can take a street legal vehicle anywhere in the city they want to. Uh, I don't know how they've gotten that, and, and that what we're doing is looking at restricting the use of low-speed vehicles on the city streets. When really, it's the opposite is the case, and that is, they're not currently permitted on the streets of the city mobile, at least according to my understanding. And what we are, what we're about is trying to figure out a way to make it legal to operate them on some of the city streets. So, I would just appreciate if the media would, uh, correct any misunderstandings that are out there about what the city council's trying to do here. Anyone else? You want to agree to the bail warrant?
Orders is zero-two, zero-one-nine, zero-twenty, zero-twenty-one, and zero-twenty-two. Are, are ending sections two dash sixty-two, two dash sixty-one on the Mobile City Code communications with the council.
Yes, on, uh, zero-two dash zero-two-two, after reviewing the, the comments of the rules committee meeting, it appears that we don't have a support for zero-two dash zero-two-two. So, rather than, you know, pushing it forward, I would ask that we just go ahead and table this last one. And, uh, Ms. Gregory, I think Ms. Gregory's got an amendment to want, uh, zero-two dash zero-one-nine.
Yeah, on zero-two, zero-one-nine, uh, there is language in there about public commi- uh, public comments during the committee meeting. And right now, it reads that it would be at the, uh, I think, option of the, uh, committee chair. I just want to change that to majority of the committee members to, uh, public. At the committee meeting.
Carroll.
Sometimes input from the members in the, uh, gallery, whatever you're gonna call it, is sometimes also helpful to the council. Sometimes political interest in the way of hearing the public. And every time we take additional measures to limit what the public or people in the city can say to us, I think is, is contrary to what we're trying to do. It's just like, uh, some of these amendments to the rules, especially when you're granting the same, the same option to an appeal as a public hearing. I think that when people come down to a public hearing, it's a public hearing, and everyone that wants to be heard needs to be heard. You know, our, our job is to hear the people in the city and not to reduce what the people in the city can actually say to us. You know, I, I don't like limiting what, uh, options we have. I really don't. So, that's, again, I think that is for the people talking, and not my personal belief, because people want to be heard. And we're here to represent the people, and we're not here to benefit our own time and, you know, our own conscience. If, if it takes ten days, it is public, then we should be public.
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I don't disagree. But our job as elected officials is to hear them in our districts and represent them at these meetings. We have very limited time to handle a lot of business for the city. And if we let a lot of people come and take up ninety percent of a committee meeting with their thoughts, many of which we've heard before, whether it be in written communication or oral in front of the city council, then I think we do a disservice to the city by not handling the true business as a committee and talking through the in-depth issues that need to happen. So, while yes, I agree, there may be a time for that, I think we've got to be very cautious with how much time is applied to that. And it's up to us to be in connection with our constituents and bring their voice back here into the committee meetings. Thank you.
Uh, again, I totally disagree. Uh, I think it should be up to the chair. Uh, people should be heard. And, and at times, there are times when even the chair can, can invite in someone to help in the complete understanding of what we're trying to do. So, I, I just thought it was great, we were continuing to limit the voice of the people over and over again. And the people didn't elect us on a limited amount of time. There was no limit on the time for us to be down here with the people that elect us. True enough, this position is a, uh, as we say, part-time position. But when it comes to fulfillment of this, our time to do business is not limited. Because in our reality, if you're doing it right, it's full-time. And it's not this when you're down here, it's when you're everywhere else too.
Thanks. I'm with Mr. Jones on this. I, I think that, that any citizen that wants to address us on any matter has multiple avenues to do that. They can make an appointment and come see us, they can call us on the telephone, they can send us an email. They can sign up, if they do it by Thursday, to speak to us at any time they, on any Tuesday they want to about any topic that has to do with the city mobile. Any, every item that appears on our agenda, they can show up and speak to us on. Um, there, there are times when I want public comment at committee meetings is appropriate, and there are times when we need the ability to have a working meeting where we don't take public comment. I think, I think there are, as I said, multiple avenues for the citizens to speak to us on any num- on any topic they want to, really. And, uh, I think we've got to have some rules in effect that allow us to go in and do our business. Johnson.
Yeah, just one last comment to the amendment. You know, I, I think it's very important that we not ever go down the line where one person can make a decision for this body. That is extremely dangerous and it's wrong. We have always exceeded the standard with building consensus with this group. And to say that one person should be able to make the decision for the entirety of the committee or this body is going down the wrong path.
Mr. President.
Ms. Carroll.
One, one person making a decision to allow the gallery to be heard is not making a decision for this body. Body, the deliberations are still heard. The deliberations are still heard between the three and then the seven of the council. The information coming from the gallery could be most important in force or from, and then to ask to speak to the council. So, again, it's not the one person allowing the gallery to speak. The deliberations are actually gonna be handled based on what you heard from the gallery.
Ms. Rivera.
Yeah, the, the reason that I bring this up is along the lines of what Scott is saying, that I think it is more fair and more inclusive if the members of the committee make the decision. And it's usually informal. If we're at a committee meeting and it's to take care of the business of the council, and we have people in the audience who are raising their hands and want to speak, we have in many occasions called the members who are here and said, "Y'all want to hear from people in, in the audience?" And by times out, did we say yes. But if it is truly a working meeting and we need just strictly a working meeting of the council, we have to be able to do that too. When we have committees of the whole, it is always, at least in our experience, they have been open meetings where we allow the public to speak. In fact, we advertise it that way. So, we do it both ways. But when we have to take care of business of the council, it can't be just an open town hall meeting every time because we will never get anything done. We can do it both ways, and I think that's what this is for. Three members of the committee, everybody who is here gets a say in it, and one person doesn't make up everybody's mind for how we're going to operate as a committee or as a council.
Well, in all honesty, if we've always done it the way, why not leave it that way?
Because we need some rules to go by. Mr. Reynolds has got the rules here, and it gives us something to go by.
Now, it actually-
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that is what we have done in the past.
But now, the rule actually changes the process.
Not necessarily.
But in issues of politics, when there's a heated debate and a heated item, that leaves way to limit what anyone else can say by a vote of two people that may be on the same line of thinking saying that we don't want to hear from them.
Mr. President. The idea behind all this is not to, to limit the discussion and the input and all that sort of stuff. It's really to narrow the focus of the discussion towards the subject matter that's before us. That's really the idea with all of this. And, and, uh, some committee meetings we have really are mundane in a lot of ways and really narrowly focused to a, a very detailed item. And it's helpful to the council to really us, I mean, it's a complex issue sometimes that we really need to hammer out amongst ourselves. And so, I think this is an option, uh, to allow for those more mundane meetings and, and more public discussion, or public input is not always necessary or required. But in the event we do have some of those controversial topics or subject matters, it would be, it would behoove the, the committee, whoever they are, to allow for that comment to happen. It's not like, you know, by passing this amendment, we're saying, "No public comment." It just requires a two-to-one vote if there's one dissenting person, or just, you know, just a majority, simple majority vote. I don't think it's that big of a thing.
I've said enough.
Thank you.
Let's just hold it up there. Anyone else? I'm working.
Sixty-four, zero-two-three, we zone property located at fifty-four hundred Hamilton Boulevard from I two to I one. Sixty-four, zero-two-four, we zone property located at thirty-fifteen and thirty-nineteen Pleasant Avenue Road from R one to R six. Consent resolution is held over forty-one, five-seven, declared construction at two twelve North Street. A public nuisance and order is demolished. CFP, we-
We're gonna hold that over. She just called me a few seconds ago, talked David in the back. David's recommending that we tear it down. She said that she physically or, uh, physically doesn't have enough money to hire an architect based on recommendations from our, from our building inspector. I want to talk for a full minute and see if there's anything that I can do, you know, for her.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to remind the council that we're at the end of our timeframe. Council does not take action today, one way or another, by paving a municipal portion of the city will have to go back and re-signify. The property enters a restart process again.
So, I did, I did the table.
Interesting. I just want to bring that up to the-
We have what, not yet, so?
No. This is it.
This is it?
If we don't take action today-
Well, I still need to talk to her on death between now and thirty. I mean, property rights are, you know. And, and even though she can or does not have the physical capabilities to do everything that we want her to do, sometimes you just don't snatch people's property from them when they don't have the resources, you know, that they can't get. You heard what she said. I, I don't have the money. I'm property. But we're gonna take it anyway. That, that is fine.
Ms. Carroll, is this later or when?
Uh, it's been out there. I think what, sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight, sixty-eight.
So, what happened, I can't remember, what happened to the first meeting? What did she say?
We gave her the ability to get a permit. Well, the inspector went out to see that if a permit could be granted based on what was said, but the inspector came back and said that architectural drawings had to be done and submitted in order to get a permit because of the damage to the property. So, that itself added additional, an additional financial burden to get in the house or repair to the point where it was considered not a nuisance by the city. But in this case, fiscal, fiscal ability from the constituent isn't at a point where she can do everything the city wants. In this case, the city's gonna move forward because the lady doesn't have the resources.
Could you call us and know something between now and thirty? Carroll.
Yeah, two resolutions held over twenty-one, three-nineteen, authorized contract, any access and construction for drainage group D, R B. Resolution is held over zero-one, three-twenty, authorized ground for A, provided tennis license in Clint's Parks Recreation Department. Zero-eight, three-twenty-one, blue purchase order to Harrells for fertilizer for Zellia City Golf Course. Zero-eight, three-twenty-two, blue purchase order to English Trend for annual license renewal for Y M S Data Southware. Zero-eight, three-twenty-three, blue purchase order to Awa for furniture for Mobile Police Department First Brusick. Zero-eight, three-twenty-four, blue purchase order to Series Four for, for expeditions. Zero-eight, three-twenty-five, blue work source to Downey Chevrolet for General Tahoe Police Package. Zero-nine, three-twenty-six, blue transfer funds for general fund, public services maintenance, department salary to capital pool response, capital project for public works. Twenty-one, three-twenty-seven, authorized contract amendment for one-year renewal with Osprey Initiative for removal of Volta Volta on the Oxford Avenue route, Florida. Twenty-one, three-twenty-eight, authorized contract for Ford Williams for Ashland Place Drainage. Thirty-seven, three-twenty-nine, consider approval of certificate of public needs and necessity, ten K non-emergency medical transport to operator Schultz. Thirty-seven, three-twenty- Consider approval of a certificate of public needs and necessity to open air. Global, uh, building is assessed John in transportation operators dancer. Orders is being introduced, zero-one, zero-two-five, and zero-two-six are orders to provide reapportionment of seven city council districts in the city of Mobile.
Carroll.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, text went up there now. Um, the, um, the reapportionment maps, the redistricting maps that are presented have very, very little change from the administrative maps that were issued to the city. There, the, the changes were so small to get this, to get to this point that they only occur along lines or areas that we're already aware of, which were the Springfield Boundary and also in District One, uh, the Volterra Boundary and around the House that were moved. So, there, there were little items were done, there were a few things were done. Matter of fact, District Six, Five, Two, Three, and, uh, uh, the others remain the same except for one and seven of one, of version one. In the version two, uh, there was some smoothing, uh, that was seen where it actually reduced District Two to fifty-nine percent. And so, it affected District Two just a little and also Districts One and Seven. And maybe just a very piece of six around the, uh, morning side. So, that's it. Uh, it just very, very, very little change to the administrative, to the administrative.
Any comments on the council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, look, had a lot of conversations this last week, and I think there's a consensus. Instead of dragging out this process another three, four, or five months, voting up or down, and then putting another map on the table with annexation, I'm gonna move, and I've asked the mayor's staff to go ahead and put the annexation map on the table. There is room for, um, movement, and, and there is room to gain consensus with a redistricting map. But instead of dragging this out the rest of the year and what has been a very divisive, um, path that the city has been on for the last six weeks, I would like to see us have one conversation, do the polarization study. If you want to get consultants, fine, but do it with the map that matters, and that is with annexation. So, I don't care if we bring these up or not, but I think we need to do it. One time, expend the resources, one time, expend the energy, one time, and let's get it right for this city.
Uh, Mr. President. Mr. Robinson. I, um, would like the maps that these are, these two agenda items. I'd like to be able to compare the, the data apples to apples, just the census tracts. I mean, there's a hundred pages of the census tracts, and I can't make it through tails of it. So, if, if you could have a breakdown similar to what the- So if, if you could have a breakdown similar to what the administration provided where we can compare what there's actual changes reflect. And then, of course, a more clear map, which you and I discussed. It's just not detailed enough where I know what that can vote for.
I'll send you the demographic breakdown. I'll call out, I'll give you the demographic, demographic breakdowns report. I have, I have them scattered there as, as I discussed earlier. Uh, the only major decrease in demographics would be in Districts, uh, One and Districts Seven, where Districts One goes down to about sixty-three percent, District Seven goes to about fifty-three percent. Uh, and then that's on version one. And then version two, District Two goes down fifty-nine percent from, they're currently sixty-two percent with Districts One and Seven kind of hovering between one and one and a half percent. I will send those to you somewhere around. We probably all somewhere between down.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. And I'm, I'm really more concerned with just the idea of the reapportionment other than all the racial makeup and breakdown, all that stuff, and just the idea of us reapportioning. But I can't tell that enough, so I look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
There's also a brown map that shows every term.
Another councilmember?
I was having a question.
Mr. President.
We laid over the layers map until June, I just can't remember.
Seventeen.
June seventeen?
Uh, yeah, I don't plan to act on this this week, but next week when, uh, when Cory's back. This is the first read, so by council rule, we get laid over one week. That'll get rid of the content, give you a bit more, uh, visual information. And then I would ask that next week that we discuss them all in the same committee. Anyone else that wants to add anything else to that committee meeting is to do so at that time.
Oh, well, it's not, it hasn't been assigned to a committee at this moment.
No, it hasn't, but I look forward to get assigned to the same committee. I, it's all, I'd give it to administrative services.
Oh, it hasn't been, okay. What is the date on that?
May third.
Another councilmember? No, number three.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero-three three three one, reappoint Julian Sawyer and appoint Mickey Lewis to the Mobile City Center Advisory Board. Zero-nine three three two, round eight minutes from District Seven discretionary funds to Public Services Sanitation Department budget free removal in the Summer Place subdivision. Thirty-one three three three, authorize mayor to receive grant funding from A M through the Mobile County Commission to afford pickup and disposal of scrap tires as part of ride away scrap tire removal program.
Mr. President. On this one, I, the scrap tire, right of way scrap tire removal program, I'm not familiar with that program. Uh, is there someone I could bring up to speed a bit on?
Yeah, uh, Keena, do you want to? Yeah.
It is a, um, through a grant funded by A M that the county has and we're on one of the super recipients of it. Uh, we've had it a few different rounds, usually it lasts three years, the last go around. I think it's consistent with this one that we actually get up to ten thousand dollars per year reimbursement for the disposal costs associated with picking up scrap tires from the right of way. So it just helps us with that cost, uh, because we do respond to a number of three-on-one calls or just when we're out about, um, kind of seeing things or any cases of illegal dumping on the right of way. Um, you know, we see that, that cost head or bust, so it helps with that.
We get reimbursed per tire, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, ten thousand.
Yes, and I believe it's over three years, so it's up to thirty thousand total over those three years. So it's been a big help. Uh, I think a number of other municipalities in the area also have agreements with the county. Uh, so we were pleased to see that that, um, grant is continuing for another round at that level.
Mr. Parker.
In this program, when communities do cleanups and they pick up scrap tire, old tires, does that cover pickup when, if they pick up the tires and place them on right of way fences? Or if people in the neighborhoods place tires on right of way fences, does that cover pickup of those tires? How, how does this work?
So, you know, when, when a community, uh, like, like we had one actually long ago in District Seven, uh, you know, got together and they had, uh, you know, tires as, as part of that. Yeah, the, the tires that are ultimately discarded in the right of way, you know, we will pick up and we need to dispose of properly. Um, I, I, I would say that, that we do need to be mindful, you know, we have an upcoming, um, community cleanup and we announce that people are picking up tires. Sometimes that then encourages people to go ahead and put them out in that area. Uh, but, uh, but, but yeah, it is part of, of that, you know, any of the, the tires that we're picking up from the right of way that we need to properly dispose of. And it just helps offset that cost. We still, we'll have costs, you know, above and beyond that.
I just, it's better obviously to work ahead of time with the community groups. So I wonder if when the cleanup's, where they're going to put the tires. So I just wanted to make sure that when that happens, that they will be disposed of. That the community group itself is not responsible for taking the tires somewhere.
So, you know, so long as you, you know, coordinate with, uh, you know, our, our coordinators, Angela Pampi-Mae is usually the point of contact for that, and she coordinates with our trash department as needed. Um, we do plan having a tire amnesty day later in the year, so when we have that date, um, you know, identified. We've done that in the past where we have several locations and parks where residents with proof of, of I D that they are indeed, uh, live in the city can dispose of up to four tires per person. So I think that, that's also an important factor to, to, to help, you know, ensure that people have a means of disposal for tires they may have laying around.
Another councilmember? Ms. Oliver.
Forty-three three four, just a player in the district of Public Assistance at thirty-two ten First Avenue. Fifty-eight three three five, the color green, some options, meaning move sixteen twenty-seven. Sixty-three three six, improvement of water special bonus on August seventy-one. Sixty-three three seven, and three three eight, three three nine, hard determined appropriations to Pac Theater, Company Foundation, Family Center, Mobileville, as well as Council Services, and Game Hunters, eight, several public departments that are fully named. Resolutions being introduced, zero-eight three forty, approved purchase order to Deere Company, for John Deere, compact utility contractors, Parks Department, forty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and cents. Zero-eight three forty-four, approved purchase order to Steppers Ford for six Ford Explorers. This is a hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. Zero-eight three forty-two, approved purchase order to Steppers Ford. Blanket for Ford Explorers for ninety, one thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars. Zero-eight three forty-three, approved purchase order to Steppers Ford for two Ford Explorers for sixty-one thousand, two hundred sixty dollars. Twenty-one three four four, authorized contract J P organization for interior players at the City Center, twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Call for public clearance, forty-one three four five, call for public clearance to consider under certificates of the convenience and necessity to Taylor's House of Familiars to offer a show service scheduled May third. Forty-one three forty-six, call for public clearance, rezoned property located at the East Side of Bill crush road under twenty-sixteen, um, Ocean Road from G two to R one, schedule place seventy-eight.
Any other council? And any other administration?
Last week I asked about the city committee and the bodies that are being extended within the two of the boundaries that committee makes whenever. Uh, I'd like to be included in those meetings so that I too know what's kind of going on. To, I know that we have quite some money to be spent, uh, and how to spend it, I'd like to hear that. The other thing is that I believe we're coming up on a deadline. It's gonna be reported that you can't spend the money, that we have the allies in place to get it renewed.
So I think, I think I responded to you, Mr. Carroll, that, um, we're waiting on a, a street optimization study so that we can let contracts, but we'll make sure that you're included when we get that. I think that presentation is, is it next week? So we have a presentation being done to us by Volker next week.
Mr. President. Yeah, just, uh, I saw Joe walk in and I just want to say thank you, Joe, for setting up the meeting that the city council had yesterday at the US Coast Guard Aviation Training Center. Uh, it's, it's always great to get out and, and see those partners with our city that bring so much to the table. And indeed, those, those facilities and people and that mission has been part of the city for many, many years. And I look forward to many, many years in the future. So thank you for that. That was exceptionally special yesterday, thanks.
Yeah, I do agree. Um, I'm sure you can, um, pack up a gun or anything, you know, and we can sit up today. If you're out there, some things, I appreciate it. Mr. Hayes?
Yes, I'd also like to join Mr. Jones in thanking Mr. Snow for setting that up and, and really commending everybody out there in A T C Reveal for the great job they did hosting us yesterday. You know, um, as I say many, many times, Mobile is the economic driver of not only the city but more the economic drivers of, of the state. And Mobile is a maritime city. Uh, our commerce is dependent on seaborne commerce. And we could never have done what we've done over Mobile's three hundred year history without having the support of the United States Coast Guard and various elements. And, uh, they really are, we commend them. Thank you for setting that up, Joe.
Mr. Carroll, Mr. Parker. Uh, I'll go left, I'll go left, Mr. Parker.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I really appreciate the tour yesterday and look forward to getting that, so that we can thank everyone appropriately. It was terrific to see what happens out there and when we learned about the economic impact that Coast Guard has at Mobile. I wasn't aware that it was that much, a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that, that's strong. So just a terrific tour, enjoyed getting in those simulators and flying, you know. Um, it was just a great experience and just a little taste, just a tiny taste of what, you know, that you're for. So I'm sorry.
Making it crashing.
I watched the baby quite a bit. Um, Joel was cool handling, absolutely all his cool handling. It was great.
Mr. Carroll. Uh, yeah, uh, in response to our ordinance that was introduced, that was tabled on the moving the homeless, uh, there was so much controversy surrounding it that I asked United Way when Joel and I was in here to set up a meeting with all of the resource providers and the homeless coalition to where they were operating in unison like they used to back in, I want to say the late nineties, uh, back when homeless first, first got started. Uh, Krista and, uh, the director of United Way did a great job in getting this meeting together. But through the course of that meeting, getting everybody introduced to each other, getting the task was asked. And again, it was asked by me, is how many, do we truly have homeless here? Because I remember that they count on, again, like I said, is based on the federal requirement to get them to a certain number for financing. Sometimes they don't, most times they don't get all the numbers. Uh, one of the things happened yesterday that was true to President is that, quote, they said, "We actually get about seven hundred people a year off the streets in town." But if you're doing that, we have an average every year of six hundred and twenty-five, then it's clear that we have more homeless in the city than if we continue to have six hundred and twenty-five when we're saving seven hundred. But the task that was asked of the group is going forward. Let's work together to find a place that we unify our resources to where we have everything in place, so that we have to start taking people from places off the street, that we have a place to process it, clean it up, and hopefully do what we need to do as a city to get them to a local service.
Mr. Parker.
I was able to get into the last portion of that meeting yesterday as well. And something that was really obvious was that there are a lot of providers out there, but we don't know necessarily who they are or what they do. Jordan was there, he's not in his hand. And there is a, a two-one-one number that you should be able to call. If you've got an issue, you should be able to call two-one-one and they can immediately send you or whoever you are looking to a particular place for whatever aid they need. And that's not happening because their information is not updated either. So it is really obvious that there is some disconnect out there. But there are a lot of providers who are doing work in the area that we need to be able to ask the city if we're going to continue to provide financial aid as well. And maybe we could drift for Village I, maybe setting up another fifteen place I can, you know, we also have to be aware of what that is and do whatever our part is as well. And there were, the people from Drakewood Village were there and, and great numbers, as well as some of the folks that we have worked with over the years, Dan Williams, you know, that group. So, um, it was interesting, but I think it's really obvious that there's a lot of work that, that needs to be done.
It's, uh, it's, it's the near beginning of what we should be doing to where we, uh, and the point about two-one-one is great, but as you said, it's housing in our own place. I think it needs to be housed at homeless first because that two-one-one number is twenty-four hours a day. But that's just, that's things that we could address through outside leadership and community involvement that's we've done before. But the last statement was, is, is, is everybody in there agreed that one of the main contributors is, is that we have a serious need for affordable housing in the city. And so many people like right now are at that very edge where they miss mortgage payment back by buying and then they're on the street. And we need a whole lot more affordable housing and a whole, a whole lot more opportunities for them. So I mean, I was in total agreement with you yesterday. Uh, last statement was, I think the city should have a little more skin in the game. And I look forward to, uh, finding a way to help that process.
Mr. President. Yeah, look, this, this goes back to a conversation that we had a long time ago. And, and the meetings that we had with the city, I was under the impression that they're working to help stand up an organization that would oversee all of these facilities and, and organizations and, and collaborate with them. And that would be the city's antenna, sort of overarching all of these resources so that we would have an idea. And I think that was probably about six months to a year away. Um, are we still on that path? And so I think that's gonna answer a lot of these questions, um, as to what we're hearing. But I don't think, you know, Housing First is the right entity when they have skin in the game to oversee other organizations. I, I think that, that leads to some, some issues. I think we need a, a different organization that, that has an umbrella over all of these and, and appropriately, you know, provides the resources as needed to all the organizations.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
I'm, 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 I'm agreeing with that. I don't think if you took my statement about housing first and the couple of calls, I mean, the housing first, you owe that. Uh, the whole reason why I asked United Way to put together the meeting was so that we didn't have to continue with care trying to organize every inch. That way it gave an umbrella of organization, control of uniting everyone. So I'm gonna agree with you.
So the, uh, the administration's very active in this, exactly what you're talking about, about the service providers. A lot of them funded by the city. And so, um, I think you, the mayor and I met with the internal team to put together a database. I think you'll be very impressed with, it's not built all the way out. But to understand exactly what type of services are being offered, especially by those that are being funded by the city, and to also give all of these service providers access to other services that are being offered. So whether the person is a veteran, what's, what veteran services, has mental health, illness, substance abuse, that we can interconnect all of those things. And we're also working with Ms. Gregory on a program to get people out of the streets. Um, we're not quite there yet to announce it, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I think you'll be very pleased with the results.
Thank you.
Another councilmember?